Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Bolz. I'm the Chair of the Plainfield Select Board, and this is a meeting of the Plainfield Select Board. It's Tuesday, September 21st at 7:00 PM. With me in the Town Office is Sasha Thayer. She's another board member. And Tammy Farnham is joining us on Zoom, and she is the other Select Board member. So we're here to start our meeting. The first item on the agenda is whether there are any changes to the agenda. So does anybody have any changes they'd like to propose?
The only thing that I didn't see... Oh, pedestrian bridge. No, we're good. I didn't see that at first. Sorry, we're good.
All right, great. All right, so the next thing is announcements. Do you have any announcements, Sasha?
Why don't we just also list the people who are here in case for Paul?
In addition to myself and Tammy and Sasha, George Cushing is on. Grace Vincent from the Severnham Regional Planning Commission is on. Linda Wells is on, our clerk, and Pam Kelly Kinnabur is on.
And just to clarify, well, Cam is on with me as well. So it's Pam and Cam, Kelly. And we're glad to be here tonight.
So can you give Pam's... So Pam and...
Pam.
Pam and Cam?
Pam and Cam. P-A-M and C-A-M.
Okay.
We're over on Perkins Road off Maxfield.
And that's the same last name, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thanks. All right, so first agenda item is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I was going to announce that we heard from the... If you have any interest in being in law enforcement, the Washington County Sheriff's Department is looking for people, which I think is pretty perennial, but they're like seriously looking for people right now. So just that I would mention that, maybe this is something you were thinking of, or somebody you know that you think might be a good person. Sam Hill would love to hear from anybody. He's the sheriff.
Okay, great.
Would this also be a good time to make the announcement that we're also going to be looking for? Was it a school director?
Oh, yes. We do have a witness down later, but I forgot to list that one. Thank you.
Looking for a school... Could you be more...
The director for the Twin Kill, the school district.
Okay. All right, so, and do you have any public comments? Anybody from the public would like to make a comment? Mr. Cushing, go ahead, George Cushing.
Last week, you mentioned, last meeting, the special board meeting, had signs for the new owner for the hardware store. One thing I'd like to mention that I think that you folks should look into is there's supposedly seven parking places that are allowed for that building. Now would be a good time, speaking of safety, to lower that to maybe three, because seven cars a park there, you're not getting through. And back when I was a constable, I tried to do that, and the previous owner really went wild. But now that we got a new owner and everything, I think it's a good thing to change the parking.
So, George, just make sure I'm understanding. You're saying that in front of the hydroponic store, there's seven parking spots there?
Years ago, the Select Board said it's back as far as 2006 or '07, maybe before that. They allowed seven parking places. They said they could have seven parking places in front of that building. So against the wall, and like I said, I tried to change that, being proactive, but the previous owner came to the Select Board and won the battle. And I just think now that we have a new owner, I think that definitely should take place for safety reasons.
It doesn't seem like you could park seven there now regardless, right?
Well, some on the wall and then some right in front of the building.
But I mean, given the construction, is there even space to park seven right now? I wouldn't think...
It was really unrealistic, unrealistic, and but, you know, it kept going on. And there was never seven cars, but it's pretty tight, even with three cars, so.
I think that if we want to take this up, we need to notice it for a future agenda, so that there's a notice of it, and then... So if the other two Select Board members are interested in pursuing this, we can put it on a future agenda. Would you like us to do? Tammy and Sasha?
I mean, it's a good time to have that conversation, since we're making changes to that area. So I think it's a perfect time to start those conversations.
Okay, so is the next agenda, is the next meeting agenda the time to do it, or some other time?
I think our agenda next time is pretty busy. So I would say maybe the last meeting of October.
Okay, so the 19th.
Okay, all right. We'll put it on that agenda. Great. Thanks, George. Any other comments from the public about anything? All right, I don't see anybody's hand up, and I don't hear anybody. So I think we're going to head into the agenda now. So Linda Wells, it's your turn to give us a clerk and treasurer report.
Hi there. How you doing?
Hi, Linda.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Are you all rested?
Yes, I had a great time. Very nice vacation. Thanks. So we're in the go.
Well deserved.
Thank you so much. Let's see, um... The first thing is the approval of warrants. I noticed with the September 10th payroll, you approved at your last meeting kind of prematurely. The September 10th, normally payrolls are processed every Tuesday, and you as the board signed the warrants prior to Friday, when the employees actually received their paychecks. So the warrant would normally be recorded at the following Select Board meeting. So for some reason...
Well, we had two of us already sign it throughout, because...
Right, but...
And then two of us...
Yeah, I understand that, but normally the payroll warrants wouldn't be signed, wouldn't be recorded in the minutes until the following meeting, only because the payroll doesn't even take effect to that following Friday. So that's been the normal process that we follow. So I wanted to approve the September 10th minutes, I mean payroll, and the September 17th payroll this evening.
All right, can I have a motion for that?
I move that we approve those.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Then you have your approval of minutes next.
So I know that we have up, well, we actually have up August 24th, September 7th, and September 13th. But I suspect that Timmy and Jim haven't had a chance to look at the ones for the 13th. That was the special Select Board meeting. But Eric did a beautiful piece of the Times Artist about warning everybody about, or about traffic. It was really good. Anyway, so I'm assuming that Jim and Tammy haven't had a chance to look at the ones for the 13th, and I'm still working on the ones on the 27th. I would move that we approve the minutes for the 24th of August and the 7th of September.
I did review the 13th. What about you, Tammy?
I did review the 13th and the 7th, but there were some changes on the 7th that I had noted.
You sent an email about that.
Right, so I'm not sure.
What were those?
There was, in the 7th, there was something in relationship to you were going to reach out in the old firehouse project, that you were going to reach out in reference to the flood and DRB, but I think you were going to check into the historical, not the flood. I was going to work with, I was working with Jay in reference to the state and the flood.
Well, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because I looked at that and I went, "Oh, I completely forgot that."
No, I think, right, I think you were doing the historical piece.
Yeah, I think so.
So I think we need to re... And I don't recall, I didn't go back to the video. So I think we need to look at the video and clarify those pieces. I knew you were doing the historical piece, and I was doing the flood. So I knew it would look wrong, but I don't know the actual conversation.
Well, I so appreciate that, because I looked at that and I just thought, I spaced out. So could we possibly approve the August 24th and the September 13th in that case?
So the 24th, I was going through meeting minutes before, and then I got interrupted. So I didn't get a chance to get to the 24th. I think the 24th needs some work. So I need to figure those out, because there is, I quickly looked at them at one point, and there's some things that need to get changed. So I'm okay with the 13th.
And then my motion to just move to approve the minutes of September 13th and to put the other minutes on the agenda for the next meeting.
All in favor?
I was working on those, and then I got taken away. So, sorry.
No problem. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right, next, we're up to... Are you finished, Linda? Do you have more of your report?
I just wanted to speak to the American Rescue Plan funds, but I probably should wait until you get to that agenda item.
Are you going to be around? If you're not going to be around, tell us what your thoughts are.
Can I just do it quickly, maybe? I just want to mention that since the COVID began, there's been some concern about air quality in the town offices and the town building. And so, and as you know, we have air conditioning on the first floor and need to keep the windows closed. And so I was, we'd like you to consider that we could possibly have a better ventilation system in the town building. We'd like to have more fresh air coming in, especially with the COVID continuing on throughout the year. So I'd like you to consider using some of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, so we could have a ventilation system for the downstairs. And also, the second floor, of course, has no, not much ventilation. There's no air conditioning, and the windows apparently are painted shut once again. So it's hard to get much airflow there. And so we might want to consider doing something on the second floor for better quality, whether it be air conditioning or some kind of other ventilation that we could have installed. Just something to consider with the funding.
All right, that's good to know. I mean, personally, I think I would recommend that we have a building, maybe an audit or something going to the building, and have them make recommendations regarding that. And then we can decide, based on those recommendations, what we would actually want.
Okay.
So I'm fine with looking into that. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Personal opinion. We can add that to the discussion later.
Yeah, you know, this was brought to my attention at the Unitarian Church. It was really completely off my radar scope, and there was this big project to look at ventilation there. And they came up with some money for it, and I, it's like, you kind of, you know, hit your head with your fist and go, "How come I didn't think about that? How come I didn't think about that with the town building?" So I appreciate this being brought up as something to think about.
So then, is that it for you, Linda?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Remember, you brought up everything you wanted to bring up.
Yes.
I don't know, she might want to tell us if we should give her a bonus or something.
Thank you. So are we up to an update on pedestrian bridge construction?
I think so. So I actually got exciting news that we are moving forward now. So last week, I met with the engineer, the structural engineer came out to the site. So we had, due frames didn't come out, but due frames had been out to the site prior to that. So at this point, all three engineer companies have reviewed the project, and we have determined that we're actually not going to take out the stones going all the way down to the river like the initial plans were. I was extremely nervous about the foundation and continuing to take material out. So I kind of came to the meeting a little bit, well, they had started the meeting early, and so I came and they identified that they were going to continue that. I kept expressing my concerns of continuing to take material, because if you take the wall out, you have to slant back the other wall, and that requires us to take more material out. And we've already determined that there was a lot of voids, and the materials that we were taking out were stones. So what I was concerned with is you take out, you get to a point where you're taking out stones, then, of course, the concrete or the foundation, when do we affect that with all the boulders and everything we were taking out? So they decided that they would go down, because we were at a point in the river where it was kind of a flat wall, and we knew that those stones went back four feet. And so there were some nice solid rocks there. There's a section in the middle of that wall that was kind of smaller rocks, but we... So they went down, all of the engineers reviewed it, the contractors, and they decided that they could do as I asked and left the wall. So we will have kind of a wall that's the original wall, and then we'll have some of the new wall that they're going to create, and they will kind of match them together based on historical. But you'll be able to, you will be able to see the line, if you would say, of old and new. I felt like that was okay, and I was, so they agreed to move forward with that. And so as of last Wednesday, they were going to start working on creating a stabilizing pad that they were going to start building the walls and so on. So that was great, and I feel very good about that. I have to say, I left a lot of sleep about the foundation and just taking out more material, and there was the voids and all that. So we felt like we got to a solid ground, and we were able to move forward, which was awesome. So that being said, now we're going to, and then they also had the structural engineer look at the other side. Now that they got all those materials out, there's going to be a lot less material on the east side where Mill Street is. Initially, there was going to be a lot of backfill and things like that. It ended up that the wall, it can actually go right beside the current wall. So that's going to avoid a lot of like fill and so on, which that's great for the town. It also is going to relieve us of a lot of rebar and structural things that are needed, because it will go against the current concrete, which was good, too. So we had some wins in the sense of, it will be some major cost savings for us, because we're not going down, obviously, there's offset by the extra materials that we took out. But the good news is that we're moving forward now, and they should be. I haven't gone down and looked, but they should be actually getting some concrete in and starting to start restructuring, so they can move on with the bridge. So that was good. I did meet with the state on Friday to review, well, the state, so Ross and the state, and then also the engineers and everybody. So we kind of did a group meeting over Zoom, and we reviewed everything. Everybody felt really good about that, and the state approved our changes. Ross, they were going to do some, I guess, because they do everything on quantities for our bid, they do everything on quantities. Ross did ask, because I've expressed the concern of needing to know whether we were going to go over and where we stand as a town. So he asked for a project change, so that they could kind of recalculate where those changes were good and bad, so that the town could really get a sense of cost and where we are with that. So that we should be seeing, hopefully soon. The structural engineer needed to work on getting redoing the wall plans and all those things. So that came out this morning. So that should help them be able to put some numbers together. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we should have better numbers. And, but again, we have some pluses and minuses now, so I think we'll be somewhat okay. That made me feel good, and I feel like we're moving forward. So the other thing that they did mention at the meeting, which we need to really think about, and I'm just throwing it out there at this time, because I don't know, is, you know, the condition of that bridge, obviously, being, looking at, going down and looking at where that bridge is, it does need maintenance. That is a town bridge. So we kind of threw, started having conversations. Some of this maintenance will get done with the pedestrian bridge. So it's, they needed to go back and identify, like, I don't know if you guys have noticed. I'm assuming you have, but where the pavement keeps cracking right there, and Mike keeps saying he can't keep the pavement on the fill in the holes. And that's because the underlayment of the bridge is starting to get old, and it's cracking and so on. So some of that, again, is going to be fixed with the, it's with this contract, and will be fixed with the pedestrian bridge. But there is going to be some of it that isn't going to be included. So I had asked them to kind of give us a sense of what that would mean in the sense of cost, because obviously, if they already have staging and things like that all set up, and we have a contractor already pouring concrete and so on, it may be a good time for us to do some small maintenance to that bridge and cut down on cost. So Ross was going to work with the state and see if we could get them to come out and do some inspections and try to evaluate what might be needed, and then compare that with the contract to see what that might look like for the town. I told them I needed to know the project piece before I could present maintenance. So that's kind of where we left off in the pedestrian bridge. They did put some additional signs up, because the state came out and audited the traffic control. I think Friday, the contractors worked a lot on the putting additional signs up. They're going to continue to work with landowners. They were trying not to cut some trees. The state is saying they need to, so they need to work with landowners to get some brush cut. And so there's some things there. They did turn off the light. I think I told you guys that. I think that was pretty, and I know we received an email about signs. And I was being by positive pie. The contractors are trying to keep it in, the sign in place. Apparently, people keep moving the signs. So they were actually going to get concrete, and concrete them in. I haven't been down this week to see if that's any better. So that's kind of where we are. I feel like we moved forward this week, so I was pretty happy. Any questions?
Yes, the Ross, the person you were referring to, what's his last name?
Ross Gowan, sorry. Ross Gowan.
Ross Gowan, sure.
From VTrans.
Because there are two Rosses we deal with on the spread. Okay, so the next item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I have a question. I'm not sure if it's okay for a citizen test.
It is not okay.
It's not?
It's not okay.
No, not yet, in a minute.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sorry.
So I have... Well, just the general rule is, this is a Select Board meeting, and the Select Board has to decide, Jim mentioned this in the previous meeting, has to decide whether to take public comment outside of the normal public comment time. So it's kind of a two-step process for out of the public. Anyway, so as a Select Board member, first of all, I just wanted to thank you, Tammy, for all the work you're doing on this. It's just an extraordinary amount of work, and I'm so glad you ran for reelection. And I just know you put unending hours into this, and I wanted to express my appreciation. And I am absolutely certain Jim is equally appreciative.
Oh, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Then I wanted to also ask, do you have, has, it had been hoped that this would be done by October, if it started in July, but of course, it didn't really get going at the beginning of August. I know people have kind of raised the question of, how long is this going to go on? Do we have any idea of that? And I have to put you on the spot, just wondering.
So basically, the way the contract read is that they, by the time, when they closed down the road, they were given 90 days of road closure. Obviously, they started some ahead of time, and then they'll have some finish up after the road opens, but they only have a 90-day window of a road closure within our contract. So obviously, I think the road closed the last week of August. It was, but so... I think we're about 20, almost 30 days into road closure, is what I, because they were doing a countdown. I will tell you, though, that because of the delays of the voids, they had to take out more concrete. They had to do that very slowly, and I, my hat's off to Daniels. They have done an incredible job managing the unknowns and just being careful in taking apart that section. It's been a lot of manual work, instead of going in like they were intending. They have slowly, like, I don't know if anybody's drove by, but they put the bucket down there, and then they handpicked these rocks. They used a jackhammer. They were doing a lot of like removing of the slab because of the foundation piece. It's an old rock foundation, so of course, not having anything against, no material against it, only these boulders, we just don't want to damage the foundation. And so that was always our concern, and they've been really great, but it's taken time to do that. And then that was unexpected. And then also, the structural engineer was on vacation, and that created delays for them as well, because they were hoping to work on both sides of the bridge at the same time. So they're trying to stay on task, and they're trying to, obviously, not having to dig down that far and being able to go up from here as of Wednesday. That was a time saver comparatively. So again, it's kind of a balancing act, but the anticipation is the 90 days at this point. They haven't asked for an extension. And that's just the road closure.
So my other recollection is that we've asked repeatedly about the condition of this bridge and kept getting told by VTrans, "Oh, the bridge is fine", which seemed unlikely to me, considering it's almost 100 years old. But it sounds as though now that people are actually looking at the structure, it's not quite as fine as VTrans had thought.
Well, and that's where Ross was going to start. It's been inspected. So he did verify for me. It's been inspected in the last two years, and the state has identified that the bridge is fine. I think it's the question of maintenance, and if you go underneath, the bridge needs maintenance. The decking, which is the top of the bridge, is getting weak as well. So he was going to ask more questions. I don't, I would agree. We have asked those questions, and we continue to be asked that question. And even the engineers have presented that same thing, and continually are being told that. So that's where Ross was going to go and get more information, and we're just starting to have those conversations. So I was just letting you guys know, I don't, you know, I don't know what's going to be needed. It's definitely to the town's advantage. This pedestrian bridge is fixing quite a bit of, like, the decking, the pedestrian, where the pedestrian bridge, that half will be redone. But the question is, does it make sense for the town to, you know, throw in the, a little bit extra to do the other decking side? I don't know, and what that entails. So again, I just wanted to let you guys know that we're starting to have those conversations. The contractor had brought it to my attention. And so I just kind of asked more questions and trying to get a sense of what that might look like, because it seemed like it made sense if they had, it's the setup, the staging, going over the bridge. They have to do all that now. So if something truly needs to get done in a short basis, it makes more sense for the town to do it with this project than to wait. But, you know, cost is everything, so we'll see. I just, nothing at this time.
I thought originally that the whole decking was going to get redone, and the question was doing it half at a time or doing it piecemeal. So maybe we want to go back and look at what the expectation was on that. Lastly, my expectation and hope is that you're not going to go on vacation for three months until this gets done, right?
Well, I'm on vacation now, but I'm staying home, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, we want you around to keep being able to be on top of this.
Yeah. No, we're, I, hopefully, things are going to be better, and it will take less time. This has definitely been a little bit of stress and just trying to figure things out. But I think we're headed forward, which is good. I feel that.
Great, so, thanks. I think Pam, did you have, I think it was Pam asked to speak briefly? Did you have a question or something?
I did. Thanks so much, Jim. First of all, I want to say to Tammy, thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know who in the world would do what you're doing right now. I don't know who in the world would do what you're doing right now. And uh, as a citizen of Plainfield. I I just so appreciate what you're doing. But I just wanted to comment and you don't, nobody even has to respond. I'm sure everybody's read this on. Um, you know, the Plainfield Facebook page that the traffic lights are bad. And especially if you're coming from what we call Tim's convenience, you know, towards the village. We have passed. Like a half a mile of backed up traffic. Um, on the weekend. And so I I just want to say. That and I have no suggestion. Any other thought is, is it possible on the weekend when nobody's working to shut them off? So you don't even have to reply. I just wanted to comment.
Yes, so I mean, I will respond because I think this is a common question. Um, that I've been hearing, getting an email. We've actually been dealing with it on the V Trans side as well. Um, I mean, basically the, so the initial plan actually um. Change, the initial traffic plan was putting Route Two to one lane. Um, after we did that for an afternoon, it was really, really backing things up. Um, I think it was more like a twelve to fifteen minute wait. So we quickly went back because this this traffic plan has to be approved. It's Route Two, so it's approved by the state. It's there, it's pretty intense of how we got to this point. Um, that's why the project actually started late because this traffic plan has to go through so many departments at V Trans or at the state. So the, that was the initial plan. We actually went back to opening both lanes, which had to get approved. Um, they tried to do like a, because the key is, is the reason that side keeps getting backed up. Is because people are trying to turn into the village. And of course, there's not, you have to wait for the traffic from. East Montpelier to stop to be able to turn. So depending on that and where you can find a gap. Then, you know, that holds up the traffic. Um, they tried to do a delay, but the only thing is that the delay light. Only allows the first person. If the first person's not turning, what they did is then backed up the traffic. Um, so that there's no gaps anymore because those people had the right of way. So that was worse. So it's just that, you know, unfortunately, it's a busy intersection and not much room, so they can't do that turning lane. Um, so that's the unfortunate piece. So we do feel like we've worked. This is the best scenario that we could come up with. They've made changes in the last month of how to work that. Um, I did also this weekend on Sunday, um, you know. Came up to the traffic. It was past Hollis to Hill Turn. I I did keep track of, you know, and not that this feels any better, but I kind of immediately looked at my clock. And said, you know, how how long is this gonna take? Should I, you know, note this? I it only took me about three minutes to get through. It felt like a lot longer, but it was only three minutes. So. You know, I I have to, it's, I don't know, it's, I know you guys all went through the East Montpelier intersection. They had kind of the same issues that we're having, like where do you put traffic when you have all those people going through? Um, so unfortunately, I do think that we have the best scenario. We just made. Again, that the V Trans had come out and did a traffic um, control audit. And that's why more signs and brush needs to be cut because we were trying not to cut people's trees. But the state said it's in the right way and you need to do it. So I, but that's not gonna help with the delays. Unfortunately, we just need to. It it's Route Two. There's a lot of traffic that goes through there. So we have tried different things to try to make that work. Um, and and that's the best we've, unless you have a difference of dilution that the state and. We we've had lots and lots of conversations over the last month in reference to this traffic control. And just trying to figure out, you know, what's what obviously keep people safe, but also um, you know, what. What can make people go through this intersection quick? So that's that piece. In reference to the cones and the lights. The reason they can't, so they can't turn off the lights during the weekend because the bridge is still one way. And so I know people are been saying, well, move the cones out of the way. They're not there because there is a safety zone. Why they're there. The reason that they're not moving those cones is because those cones are going to become concrete barriers soon. Um, so the cones are actually to help our community, um, train them to stay within those lines. Because pretty soon they will be concrete. As soon as they get done the side pieces. They're gonna put a concrete barrier and the side of the bridge is coming off. So there's, they can't, they won't be able to like turn off lights. And so it's kind of a training process for us. As a community. Um, and I can honestly say the other piece, you know, where they can't shrink down the safety zone. I have been at that bridge for many hours in the last couple of weeks. And people don't slow down during that. Do, you know, you would think that you would slow down because of construction. People really don't slow down. Um, there's lots of vehicles that come down over the hill very fast, being one I was quite surprised. Um, East Montpelier ambulance came through faster than I've, I would ever imagine. And I was quite surprised by that because these guys are working out there. They're they're paying attention to their work. They're over, you know, working over high, high areas and so on, and they need to focus on that. Yet traffic is like whizzing by. So I've been there and and experienced that piece as well. So I appreciate it. I just don't know that we can. I unless there's some other ideas, we, I, I don't know that we can do anything different at this point except for. Plan for those delays at some points.
Okay, thanks. Uh, we're ready. Can we move on to the, to your, to Tammy, to your report on the sale of the old firehouse to Jay Southgate?
Yep, so I have been in contact with Jay. Um, we, Karen had given us a name. And um, of somebody at the state because the real thing, um, we have to get the exception from the state for the flood zone. Um, so we had an email that I I was on those emails, but I didn't recall that the last meeting, I didn't recall seeing any responses. So I did check in with Jay. Um, and he, he sent out, he didn't get a response to is why I didn't see one. So I know he was going to try, he didn't get a response to any emails. He did email out again and still didn't get a response. So I believe he was going to call the state and I haven't heard from Jay this week. Um, I was in touch with them last week. Um, he said he's got some preliminary designs, but he doesn't want to spend a lot of time on designs. If he can't do anything with the flood zone. So he, he said really he's got to get answers. To the flood piece and whether, what he's able to do before he creates designs. So that's where we are with that. But I haven't heard from him this week.
All right.
I'm saying, tell us your question. Well, it's in the flood zone, even though it's high above the river. And so apparently the state can wave. Or give a variance to what would normally be the flood zone. And that's what they're checking in with to see whether there's a, I mean, it's way higher than. Most of the other flood zone in town, but that we still, it still isn't, you look at our maps, it still says being in the flood zone. Well, in in terms of um, taking it down and and making the bill, like, you know, habitation, I think he needs. People are feeling like it needs to get cleared. So down the road, he doesn't have a problem with that.
You're waiting to get the approval from the state to do what you want.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I think we're up to, uh, by the way, that was Eric Lacy asking a clarifying question. We're up to the American Rescue Plan Act funds and Sasha has been working on that, so I'm gonna. Hope that you can lead the way with this.
Okay, um, I have been, so if you've been looking at the website, one of the things that you noticed. Is that we, I had mentioned earlier that we were going to get additional funds, the additional allocation to this, to the town. Was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. And we were given half of that. Um, I actually had the wrong number down a couple of times. The half that we were given was sixty-six thousand, fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And then it turned out that the amount that was gonna come that would have originally gone to counties. Uh, but Vermont doesn't have a strong county government, so those funds. Um, our congressional delegation got permission to have those be reallocated to municipalities. And so um, is getting an additional amount. The total for Plainfield will be three hundred and seventy-seven, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. And a couple of cents. Um, so we did get the first payment on this additional amount. So half of it in twenty twenty-one, half of it in twenty twenty-two. And that amount that we've gotten in total for the first allocation and the county allocation. Is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. That, and and this is gonna sit in a bank account um, until we can figure out what to do with it. Just to give you a little bit of an idea about some of the conditions that come along with it. We do have to report once a year on October thirty-first and it's a report that basically says. Um, we got the money and what we did with it. And and this report in October thirty-first will be pretty minimal because we wouldn't have done anything with it by that. No doubt. Um, there also are requirements for using the money and for um. Having allocated it or obligated it in contracts. And those dates are a bit off. Um, they're December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, any contracts to the, use the funds have to have been made. And they have to have been spent, the funds have to have been spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So that gives us a bit of time to really um, assess what is it that we can do. And just to let you know, the final federal regulations have not yet been uh, set, set out. So we actually wouldn't want to make any decisions until those regulations are pretty much graven in stone. So that we are not in the circumstance of having spent money and finding out that it didn't, was not in accord. With the federal regulations relating to the American Rescue Plan Act money. But in general, what we're told so far is that we can spend money on a number of areas. And some of these you may have seen by going to the website or other things I posted on social media. One is to respond to the public health emergency, that being the COVID pandemic. Or its negative economic impacts. And that can include assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits. For aid to impact the industries. I don't think we have any, for tourism, travel and hospitality. Um, the money can also be used to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency. And that's by providing um, premium pay to eligible workers. All of our workers are essential workers. We have seven employees. If you don't count the select word, which works for pennies an hour. But um, there is that possibility. Of being able to provide premium uh, pay. Did you guys sign in?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. All right, somebody just came in. Um, and then um, another area that the money can be used for, this is what we're told so far. Is for the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue during the COVID, due to COVID nineteen. Public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. So it'd be looking at this last year versus um, I guess it'd be twenty nineteen would be the previous full year. Um, certainly in the area that comes to mind in my, and that in my mind is the reduced income from the town hall opera house. Cause we haven't been able to rent it. So that might be somewhere to take some of that money from the COVID money. And put it into the general fund to to fit, to compensate for those lack of funds. And then the last area is um, to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband. Infrastructure. And it's pretty limited. Um, you can, and also just to be aware, you can't use. This federal money is a federal match. So we've been talking a great deal about the Brook Road Bridge. But one of the things the um, funds can't be used for, since the federal match for the Brook Road Bridge, it's FEMA money. Federal Emergency Management Agency um, is twenty-five percent, comes to about three hundred and eleven, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. These COVID funds, even though um, you don't, you can, there's some infrastructure areas you can use, and they couldn't be used as match for that. Um, they could be used for water and sewer. And one of the things to think about in terms of the, probably, I think, was the last time we were told. The water and sewer costs relating to the Route Two Main Street in intersection remediation project. Um, the thought was that was gonna come through, it was either three hundred and ten or three hundred and eleven. I can't remember which one is which. Um, but that would not be match money. It's not matching, it's not, it's a project, it's a town project and we're matching. It would be first year of having to cover that obligation that arises as a result of having water lines. So that's a possibility. Um, there also is obviously the broadband um, effort, which is being pretty well supported by the state overall, as I understand it. And we have CD fiber, which is serving Plainfield and Eric, do you know how many other towns? It's a lot of other towns in the center of Vermont. Um, and we did get it, we did get an email from Jeremy Matt. Who is one of the people who is one of our representative to the Center of Vermont Fiber Board. And um, he is, um, you know, he was urging us to at least make some contribution in that regard as well. Um, so the funds cannot be used to cut taxes. They can't be used to make deposits to a pension fund. They can't be set aside for a rainy day fund. They can be put in something to be considered a financial reserve in case uh, we have needs down the road. If we have existing debt, they can't be used to pay down existing debt. Um, we don't have any legal settlements, but if we did have a legal settlement, we couldn't use those funds to pay a legal settlement. Um, and it can't be used to fund infrastructure that's not water, sewer or broadband. Um, and as I mentioned, it can't be used to match other federal programs. Um, so it can't be used for infrastructure that's not specifically mentioned in the American Rescue Plan Act. And I think that that kind of covers the overview. Um, yeah, I told you, but yeah, I think that that covers, and I know that we were, we will have to make a report. I don't know that we need to approve, approve that report at this meeting. It has to be back October thirty-first, so we can put it in one of the other agendas. But that does, has to be in our mind to make sure that we're making that, getting that reported on time. So I think we're at a point, unless um, you know, for hearing from other select word members and hearing from anybody else in the community about. What they would like us to think about.
So I think, I, there's a lot of people on the call right now and there's some here in the room. Um, we are happy to listen to any suggestions people have about what we should use this money for. So if you want.
Maybe if they're on the Zoom, maybe they could put their hand up.
People who know how to use Zoom, can you just raise your Zoom hand? That's, or raise your hand visually, that if you're on camera, that's okay too. Peter Young, there you have your hand up. And unmute yourself.
Uh, does that work?
Yes.
Hi, um, thank you for recognizing me. Um, um, I have two items. Um, on behalf of the Plainfield Co-op that I'd like to put on the table. And one of them, actually Sasha, might be able to be done by this October. Um, the, one of the things that Arpa talked about was improving ventilation. Uh, that is an issue that we have in the co-op. I have some staff who've been asking about air purifiers. We've done a little bit of research on what is necessary within the spaces that we have. And uh, we're currently looking at um, uh, one fairly large one in the retail space. One in the back stock area and one upstairs in the office area. Um, and from the numbers I've been able to look at so far, uh, it looks like it's gonna be um, around two thousand dollars. Uh, for that. This is not anything that the co-op has in its budget, but um. And we don't have in that building, the old Grange Hall, any sophisticated HVA system. We actually just replaced the furnace which had died. Um, we had a um. Broken heat, heat, cracked heat exchanger, so it got redlined, uh, red tagged by the engineer. And so that was just replaced. Um, so not having a a sophisticated HVA system in there, the solutions for this are few. Um, and air purifiers are um, about the only thing that's there. Um, given that the, it's not only. Given that the it's not only COVID, but we're heading into the cold and flu season when we tend to keep the doors and windows shut. More, this will have a benefit, not just for the staff, but for also delivery people and our customers, the public. So we would like to request that a two thousand dollars be allocated. We believe that's clearly one of the. Improving ventilation criteria, it's COVID related and it will benefit. The the community who uses the space. The second thing I don't have a specific request for, but I do note that hazard pay is something that is allowable. Last year. And I'm going back to April of twenty twenty. We did institute hazardous hazard pay for our staff at the rate of three dollars an hour additional. For most of our staff are part time, that worked out to about eleven hundred dollars a week. And we continued that until, I believe, the beginning of July when we phased it out halfway. And then over the next few weeks phased it out entirely, and this was as the as the state allowed businesses to reopen and we met that criteria. So we did phase that down because the the risk had lessened to our staff. But. One of the other reasons we got rid of it is because we just couldn't afford it, we were losing money doing it, but it it's what enabled people to stay. Stay employed, those who were able to do so. We have not had anything since then in terms of hazard pay, except at the very end of the year, the state did. Provide a one time grant to certain essential workers across the state that arrived in December. About eight of our staff were eligible for that because there were a minimum number of hours and. A lot of our part time staff only work one or two days a week and so did not meet that threshold. We've had nothing since then in terms of hazard pay. And I do note that. Some of our competitors are continuing there, have continued their hazard pay and continue their hazard pay today. So it does put us a little bit of a competitive disadvantage. Anyway, I just put that out on the table, if you are looking for. Additional places, we're not making a specific request at this time, I don't have any numbers to give you, except. The parameters there that last year we did three bucks an hour to the staff and it cost us about eleven hundred dollars a week. If the town were to give us any amount of money, we would probably give it as a one time. Payment or perhaps break it up into pieces, but not looking to do anything sustained, so. Just offering that as a as a viable opportunity and an allowable cost apparently from the ARPA outline that we read.
So. Question for you, Peter.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know whether it's eligible, whether this hazard pays is okay for. Just municipal employees or not, but let's say for purposes of argument it is. Are you, what are your thoughts about assuring that? If we were to consider hazard pay for people at the club, what about your, what are your thoughts about assuring that a similar amount go to our own town employees?
Oh, I would absolutely support the town employees. I've, that goes without saying.
I just wanted to check then.
Alright, thank you.
I mean, particularly, I mean, you know, Linda and Carol, I mean, what they've put up with. Their working conditions, you know, over the past year and a half is, you know, just so laudable and whatever we can give them. You know, and if that applies to the the road crew and the sewer and water crew as well, I'm less. I mean, the road crew is more outdoors, they do, they do a lot of indoor stuff, I don't know what their social distancing situation is there. But absolutely, take care of our people.
Alright, thank you, so next person I have to hand up is Jesse Cooper. You want to unmute yourself?
Hi, just turning down my speaker. I do think that the the use of funds for the Town Hall Opera House makes a lot of sense as it's one of the. Entities in the town that clearly suffered a lot of financial. Downside from the pandemic and something that's a valuable community resource. I'm also wondering. I am interested to see when the guidelines come through for how this can be spent, where we can find that, I I guess you guys will probably. Put that out there. And in general, I'm wondering whether initiatives towards. Promoting more housing stock and or affordable housing. Falls into any of the guidelines that we've heard anything about so far. If we should expect that.
So we had, we have Grace Vincent here from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And I'm actually making a list of questions to see if Grace can answer rather than doing a piece by piece. So I just put down one of the questions being affordable housing. So thank you for raising that, I know you mentioned that to us in an email, Jesse.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Alright, does that include your comments?
Yes.
Okay, great, the next person is Rose Paul, you'd like to unmute yourself?
Yes, hello, thank you. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Plainfield Conservation Commission. We've been trying to spruce up and keep in good shape the Plainfield Town Forest. And I know that we have been before the Select Board in the past concerning the condition of Ganyo Road. For about the last half mile before people get to the parking area for the town forest. Right now, that road isn't passable for passenger cars. So one of our members, Becky Atchinson, had a conversation with Mike Nolan. It was either yesterday or today. And Mike told her what he thought the road would need for work. And it includes. Topping the road with gravel and Mike gave. An estimate of about ten thousand dollars for the gravel that would have to be purchased. So the Conservation Commission would like the town to consider that amount in its deliberations. And how it ties with the guidelines of. The funds is that there's been a big increase in outdoor. Recreational activity and use of outdoor facilities during the pandemic. Because people were so cooped up inside and so. Recreation trails, parks and those kind of outdoor facilities have had a big uptick in usage. So helping people get access to the town forest on that side, we think. Is a reasonable fit with the COVID mitigation purposes of this funding. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The next person who has a hand up is Pam, Pam, I think Pam Kelly Kinneberg.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I. My comment, well, I have two, is pretty general that I feel like. If you drop right down to it, I think we need another river run. We need something that's really going to pull people into Plainfield, into the village, which. Our village is so sweet and it just really needs something, and I don't know what it is, but it's commercial. And then I have a question, and that is. And I apologize if this has already been answered. But how will the decision get made about how this money is spent?
Think. We think the Select Board can do that without a town vote. On the other hand, that will probably be something Grace can tell us. I don't know that we're completely clear about that, but what is clear is all the recommendations are to have a. A vibrant community process, seeking input from the community. I mean, there's obviously a lot of wisdom out there. And we know there's wisdom on the Select Board as well, just from having been involved in things, but. It's, we'll get the, we'll get you that answer because we need that answer too.
Yes, that was a good question.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Alice Nowell, you do have some comments? Need to unmute? Alice, you have, okay, go ahead.
Sorry for the delay. I'm just speaking in support of spending some of that money on the sewer and water. Improvements that would happen with the US two intersection improvements. We have an opportunity to work with V Trans to make that a safer intersection to access the village by. And that's why it's a timely expense. And it also allows us to improve lines that are old and will need to be replaced at some point in time, so. This rare opportunity to have both the money and V Trans plan to work on Route two come together.
Okay, thanks, Alice. George, you had your hand up, George, first thing?
Yeah, the, I I would support spending a lot of money on water and sewer because they're pretty much out of money. And there's a lot of. I talked to Greg yesterday. And there's a couple of projects that could use the money to get things taken care of, like the school street apartments. And around there, he said that would be number one, and Berry Hill, another that you could handle. They could, they could do the intertwined with the paving stuff that's going on. And the other thing is, the money that we now have. I don't know if it's in a bank account that's gaining interest, but. Why not put that money in the CD so that we're getting, we're making money off it, that can be done. Just a thought.
I should mention, just for clarity, these funds, we can put them in an interest bearing account. And we, we, the interest doesn't have to, what we do with the interest doesn't have to get reported to the feds, so the interest in that kind of situation is gravy. It requires a little bit more in bookkeeping currently. I think what's happened both in Berry and in Plainfield is they've been put into the fund with a different account number assigned to it. The money is, I mean, literally just coming in, the second chunk of money, which is about two hundred and forty five thousand dollars, literally, or it was a hundred. Whatever came out to the total that I gave you, the total of the debt so far is.
Hundred and eighty eight thousand.
Hundred and twenty two dollars, so that money, I mean, literally has come in in September, so. Sorting out how best to deal with this and and putting it in an interest bearing account, something I'm sure Linda will be looking at, we could ask her to look at as well.
Okay. There are a couple of people here at the office that may have questions or comments?
And if you could please. Because we're trying to keep track of, or if the person who does it in minutes, that would be helpful.
We're going with Cutler Memorial Library, this is Angela O'Leary, we're here on campus, we're the chair of trustees.
I don't recognize Angela with a.
And we're also hoping the library has. Experienced a significant uptick in use by families because of COVID. And it's very, very strained our capacity for parking, we've been having used parking. Down the street and the people's houses and they have, people have to cross Route two, there are a lot of children involved. And what we'd really like to do, if we can define this as accessibility. Is widen our parking lot enough so that when people pull off on Route two, they go straight in so they can back out and then go on Route two straight. Forward instead of having to back on Route two. And also so we can park more people so they're not having to park across it by diesel and things like that across the street. So those are the.
And so you need money for a project like that.
We'd like to, yeah, we want to widen, and it's even worse in winter when it snowpogs. Covers have to work a lot of snow piles. So that's what we're hoping with, maybe we can get some funds to.
Any idea how much you would need to do what you want?
We haven't been able to do that. That feasibility study yet.
Alright, that would be helpful. Great, thanks. Is that everything for now?
Yep, hi, hi.
Great, thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, anybody else, I see, Betsy, you have your hand up? Betsy, see.
Yes, hi. Hi, this is Betsy, I I just was calling again to say. I think I I hope that the town can continue to support the improvement projects that we have. Been discussing and are already on our plate. And the one that sounds like we could use this funds for would be the Route two intersection. Project and the the sewage and water lines. In that we would need to be. We need to pay for. So I think that would be an excellent use of this money. And the other improvement that I would love to see, I know we use the rec field a lot during the last year and a half for meetings and. Public events and I I've really come to appreciate what it it can offer. And one of the things I think we could do to improve that offering is to. Remove, work on the parking lot. And remove that big pothole that we have down there that is about twenty by twenty. And about whatever, still about four inches deep or something, it really, so it really, it reduces the availability of. Of parking for people and.
That was something that we could use, the extra material from the pedestrian bridge project perhaps to fill in that big puddle.
Yeah. Yeah, so unfortunately, because they didn't take out as much material, we don't really have any extra material anymore. So, yeah, sorry. I convinced them to keep the half the wall.
Jesse Cooper, you spoke already, but your hands up again, did you have additional comments?
Is there anybody else?
Okay.
Sorry, could I, I did want to make another comment if that was.
Go ahead.
Just. Following up on what Alice and Betsy and others have said, I definitely think that. Where wastewater infrastructure is cited as a specific area. I think getting some sort of a summary from the Water and Sewer Department about what kind of. Improvements and projects that could put that money towards makes a lot of sense, that seems pretty critical to the town. And this seems like an opportunity to help that out.
But in response to that, and this is probably January of twenty twenty, when we were having some meeting, maybe in February. When the volunteer committee was meeting and talking about this, Greg Chamberlain was there. And one of the things he was sharing at that time was. Because at that point, the thought was it might be a million dollars worth of cost to. Deal with the water and sewer lines relating to the Route two Main Street intersection. And I distinctly remember Greg saying, if I had a million dollars, I already know where I could put it. So my guess is water and sewer already has very clearly in mind. What they could do with. Anything really from fifty bucks to to the entire three hundred thousand. But it certainly would be helpful to hear more directly from them. And I think if we don't have other questions or comments, we might put Grace on the spot if she's willing to be put on the spot, Grace Vincent, are you?
Yes, I'm happy to answer questions as I can.
Okay, so the first, I'm going to just go through the list in order, but it's just the order that I wrote them. In terms of the hazard pay provision. You know, I was reading that hazard pay for town employees. Is am I mistaken in that, I, Peter got me thinking, maybe I didn't understand how that. But the scope of that was, do you, and you may not know the answer to that either.
Yeah, so for hazard pay, the rule talks about. Essential workers being eligible, that definitely obviously includes town employees, but could also. Depending on details. May also include people who, you know, work in grocery stores, for example, or people who work in environments where they come into contact with. Individuals who, you know, might have COVID or something like that. So it could be.
I have read that the money, if you've already received money as an essential worker. You can't double up and get it from another source for the same hours, it would have to be for different hours that you worked, that you haven't gotten that money. Is that?
That's right, yeah, so if you have gotten hazard pay before, you can still get it under ARPA, but it has to be for a different time period, so for ARPA. The time period we're thinking about is March twenty twenty one onwards.
Okay, so the next question I had, Betsy had mentioned the idea of, is it possible to put some of this money toward affordable housing? Do you know anything about that?
That is a tricky one, and obviously a lot of communities are talking about that. Off the bat, I. Don't have a firm answer on whether that would be eligible or not. It depends on the intended use. It's not one of those four main uses that you went over. I don't know, I could go into a lot of detail, but I've been going back and forth with the LCT about this because I had a similar question from the Mad River Valley community. And. And, uh, my answer right now, all I can say is it depends, but probably not for affordable housing. But again, like you said, the final rule hasn't come out yet, so there could be more information in there.
So the other one that was raised, another one that was raised by a couple of people was the issue of recreational activity. Um, and the Conservation Commission had come to the Select Board relating to the improvement with Ganya Road. And that there is a town forest and Ganya Road is one of the ways to access it. And do you have any information, um, about whether fixing up a road to get to a recreational space could conceivably be thought to be something that could be paid for under the American Rescue Plan Act?
Yeah. So that is another really good question. These are really good questions. So I have seen information that, like, the increased use of parks and recreation facilities, you know, resulting in damage or increased maintenance could be seen as a negative economic impact. So if, you know, there was some specific facility that needed maintenance or upkeep, I'm not as sure about the road because it's not the actual, you know, recreation asset, but I'll definitely look into that more.
Well, that's the whole purpose of the road is to get to that.
Okay.
It doesn't have any other purpose.
Okay. That's, that's helpful.
I would throw in the, uh, the parking law, uh, law problem at the Red Field also is another area that my call is in the same situation as the, as that road to the Point Four.
Right. And then it brings in the question about, um, so the library is an independent nonprofit. We fund it every year. We don't do anywhere near as good as Marshfield does in funding their library. But in any case, um, so, and I know that they had before, there was even the American Rescue Plan Act, the library had raised, is there some way that there could be some funding for, or maybe was relating to the ARPA, the library parking lot? And I'm guessing that the answer is kind of the same, it needs more research.
Yeah. I would say, so in general, it's important to think about whenever you're presented with like a potential project, think about how it connects to COVID, right? Because all of these funds are supposed to be spent on COVID recovery and relief. So for example, you can transfer your money or you can, uh, supply some of your money to a nonprofit like the library, but it would need to be for an eligible use. And I'm, I would need more information and I can do some more research on how, you know, widening the parking lot would be connected to some kind of impact they may have had from COVID. And then from there, maybe we can do some more digging on whether it would be eligible.
Well, I would just note that the, the increased usage of the library because of COVID was, I think, one of the things that they, that the librarian has mentioned. And the idea is we hope that will continue even after COVID.
And I, I suppose one other way to deal with this, if, uh, for the library or some other nonprofit like that, would be to, um, um, find something else that they, um, need to do and use the funds that might otherwise have been paid for out of their own budget for that. And then use the other funds for the, the parking lot. The last one that I have on my list was how will the decision be made about the spending? And, uh, do you know whether we have to get the approval of the town? Or do you know whether the Select Board gets to spend this big pile of money without it, there being a budget item?
And so, yeah, so it's my understanding, and again, I will get this confirmed. It's my understanding based on my conversations with the L C T and reading the rule that the municipality has the decision-making authority. And if you remember, you designated that authorized representative when you signed up for all the funds. And I, I think it's my understanding that the idea is that that authorized representative who presumably works for the town will kind of be in charge of, you know, figuring out the list of projects to be funded. I have not heard anything about town votes being required. I wouldn't think they would be, but again, before I say that with a hundred percent certainty, I can get that confirmed to get back to you.
And I imagine we're not the only entity wondering about that.
Yeah, definitely not.
Oh, Grace, I'm gonna ask you.
So we're hearing from, we're hearing from, um, our reporter here that Berry Town is operating as though they don't need to get authorization in the town meeting. And I will mention Berry Town actually has a financial officer. I called her up and she gave us some materials that I learned about through a Times Artist article. And she was very, very gracious and I was immediately just so, I, I was just craving that we had the resources to have a financial officer as well. Because we don't have that. Anyway, so good to know. Thank you.
Alice asked if we had already talked about water and wastewater. We have.
Oh, we have. We talked about it repeatedly. And several, several people have said this is a good thing to do.
Okay. Uh, you were about to say something?
Yeah. So Grace, I, I'm gonna kind of pick your brain because I know you had said that you had, um, you were doing a lot of these meetings with towns and so on. So can you share with us some of the ideas that other towns are, just to kind of get us maybe thinking in a different direction? Or can you give us some ideas of what other people had thought about?
Yeah, definitely. So, you know, for example, Marshfield, they're thinking about using some of their funds to add a porch to the library to accommodate, accommodate the increased use of the library and also allow for like social distancing. So that would be one of those eligible uses, you know, renovating a public space to prevent the spread of COVID. That's an example. Um, a lot of the communities I've been talking to are thinking about, uh, water, wastewater sewer projects. One thing I would note is that water, wastewater projects, they need to be aligned with these two EPA programs. The Clean Water Service Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water Service Revolving Fund. And those are two programs that already exist at the federal and at the state level. So the state is working on putting out more information about what those programs are exactly and what kind of projects are eligible. So towns can look at that list and kind of line it up with their projects. Um, stormwater is another thing that's being brought up a lot because, again, that is one of the categories, but it also does need to align with that EPA program that I just mentioned. Um, I'm trying to think. A lot of the conversations have been around broadband water, wastewater, and kind of thinking about what kind of lost revenue a community might have that they need to kind of put back into that, um, bank account.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Or comments? Yes.
I have a question. There's another project that we've been talking about with the library.
This is, this is Carla Siegel from the library.
I'm sorry. Hi, man. Um, another project we've been talking about at the library is, um, we have a garage space that's currently not usable. It's been sort of locked away. I, I wouldn't use it more condemned, but, um, it's not considered a safe space. And we would love to, we have talked about, um, rebuilding that space if we can use it for outdoor venues. Um, because of COVID, we have to do almost everything outdoors. And so that would definitely be something that my fellow members would do.
And I think that that, that is, I'm a guess. And again, the, the final federal guidelines have not come down yet. But my guess is that that would be probably more likely to fall under this in terms of the increased use of the library and being able to think about how do we do things in a way that would be, um, COVID preventative, uh, rather than the parking lot. So, you know, you, guys, they want to be thinking about various things like that. And also just be realizing that although $377,000 is an unbelievable, you know, just wonderful thing, there are a bunch of competing interests and, and how we sort that out is, is going to be challenging. But it's really good to hear from people. As I say, I don't think we are going to be making decisions right away because we need to first wait for the fir- final federal guidelines. But, um, I'm sure we'll be taking this up again at other meetings. And, um, we're, you know, somebody may two or three weeks from now go, oh, I don't know why I didn't mention that. This is something really important as well. Please, you know, feel free to get ahold of us. If you don't, if you haven't memorized our email address, um, the email address for the, for Jim is SelectBoard819@gmail.com. For Tammy, it's SelectBoard8@gmail.com. And for me, it's SelectBoard23@gmail.com. And it's really wonderful if you can send it to all three of us, so somebody doesn't have to pass it along. But do feel free to stay in touch and, um, and if you come up with any thoughts or maybe thoughts about what, what, that might be more persuasive than what you shared with us so far.
So I will mention, I, I know that we received an email also, um, the senior center also put in, um, a request for money for the, um, heat pump. And you know, I just wanted to make sure that that got on our list.
Yeah. And one of the interesting things for the senior center is thinking about, though only now provide services three days a week in person, is there's a lot of places all over the country and actually in all over the developed world where they do co-location daycares with seniors and, um, thinking about how can we help people get back to work? I mean, daycare has become a really, really big issue with COVID in terms of people getting, you know, being able to come back to work and, and seeing that kind of resource. So that's another thing that people can maybe be thinking about creatively. Is this something that would make sense to support socially? Is there some way to, um, um, meet some of the, uh, needs? And, and with the senior center, they are certainly, you know, providing, um, food to people who are not going out because they're concerned about COVID, um, as well as people in place at this point. So a lot of us, a lot to think about.
Yeah, I agree. So I've stacked up a lot of comments and ideas, which very much appreciated. And if you think of other things, that's, that's, send us an email.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm gonna go back to, I mean, this is even just the idea is of course, then it's gonna be trying to research and identifying whether they meet criterias and so on, um, and then talking with other people as well. So I, I know that I had suggested last meeting to set up a committee, um, to start working on some of this and, and maybe going to, I know there, the league is providing, um, some webinars and so on. And so I, I'm kind of coming back to the question of maybe thinking about setting up a committee, um, to evaluate options, trying to, you know, maybe doing a survey and sending that out to more of our community. Um, I think this is a great opportunity. Um, but I think we, we need to recognize it's a pretty big, like, research project that we need to evaluate. So, um, it, I guess I'm just trying to see what your thoughts are in the sense of setting up that committee.
I guess my thought relating to research is that it's, there's going to be some definitive, um, standards from the feds. And I know that the Center of Vermont Regional Planning Commission is serving not only Plainfield, but other towns to help come up with clarity. And the league is providing that as well. So I suspect there's not going to be a need, a need for research on particular projects. We're gonna need to wait to hear, you know, with more definition. And what's come down so far that I mentioned so far has been pretty clear. And it's been pretty clear for many months now what these, what these parameters are. They haven't changed, but you never know what they might do when they send down final decision-making. Um, I think if we were to do a committee, we need to be really clear about what we are looking for. The thing that's, I, I feel a little burnt in terms of what happened with the Route Two Main Street intersection where we had a committee. And, um, you know, people were very much, and, and I'm not saying that they were wrong in this, but they were very much invested in things coming out a certain way. And we as a select board may have, um, a different perspective in terms of how we use this one-time money. And it may, and from my perspective, I think we may want to just keep our finger in the pulse a little bit more, uh, especially because we don't, aren't in a situation where we even have final guidelines. I'm also concerned about, um, having a circumstance where people are having a feeling, oh, I, I, I'm pretty sure we can get a part of this. And then that not happening just because it doesn't seem like the best thing to do. I, I don't know how one balances, um, wanting to involve people and then not, you know, raising hopes too high in a way that becomes really, um, really frustrating for people, legitimately frustrating when, when their hopes are dashed. Those are some of my thoughts in terms of that at this point.
Well, personally, I, I think a committee could be a good idea. I think it's something we should think about. If people are interested in being on a committee, they could send us emails and let us know, uh, what they think about, whether they'd be willing to be on one or what they think about the idea. Uh, if you don't think it's a good idea, you can also let us know that. I think we don't need to make a decision about that now. We could wait till, I think we need to wait till later guidelines and rules actually come out. Take a look at what they say about what we're supposed to be doing. And then we, I think that that's an idea. The committee is an idea we could revisit at a later date.
Well, I mean, I think the key is, I, I mean, I hear what Sasha's saying. I, the people on this committee are people that are looking at all projects, not a project they want. And I think that's an important piece that when, um, when taking, being part of a committee, it's really open to the idea of looking and, and at everything. But I, that's really what I'm looking for, not somebody that's interested in one project. Um, so I, I would agree with that, but I do think that there is going to be some research. I mean, just in reference to water, uh, the wastewater and all those different criterias. There's different projects, there's different criteria that go along with that. Um, and I think that as people, um, you know, come up with different projects, just for example, the library and that space, you know, how is that going to be working with the entire community? And how can we, you know, evaluate the, our way, those different projects? And I do think that there's some, there's, you know, more questions that need to be answered. And I don't know that necessarily a select board meeting is the place to do that. Um, to try to, you know, gather information of what makes their project more important than the next project. And I really think that, I, I mean, we can definitely be part of that. Um, but I, and I do hear that we don't want to lose that, maybe, you know, making sure every project is evaluated. But I do think there's a lot of research in reference to that.
Yeah. And I think the key to using a committee, if you're gonna use a committee, is what the charge is to the committee. You need to be really clear what, what their, what their expectation is of what they're supposed to do, what the scope of their authority is event. So I think-
Right.
And, and I think in terms of water and wastewater, I would be extremely surprised if they don't already know the ins and outs of those two programs. Because I'm sure they work with those programs. And, um, I, I know in terms of Tristan, Tristan did a huge amount of work in terms of redoing their regulations. And, and part of that was to be in response to, um, some requirements. So, um, I may be, I may be wrong and maybe they aren't familiar with them, but I bet they also know how to figure out what, how they apply to them. And that they would want to do that because they don't want to be in a situation if there were money allocated to them that would have to get paid back because it wasn't, wasn't done properly. So I don't think, um, I, I, a committee like this could be really useful, but I don't think that we would expect them to research and then tell the water and wastewater people, these are what your requirements are. I think we might get some better-
I mean, in, in reference to the wastewater, I mean, just for example, does the Route Two project fit within that or does it not? And that would be the question. And knowing those guidelines is-
The Route Two project is not matching money. It's not where it's our project.
Correct. It is our project.
No, no, no. It's not. It is, it is a State of Vermont project. The State of Vermont is funding it. And then there are requirements that we cover certain aspects, but it's not something where we have to come up with a 10% match or something like that. If it were that kind of project, it would clearly not be funded. Um, but, uh, you know, we could certainly, um, I'm probably-
So are you, so I guess are you trying to say that it would be or it wouldn't be? I'm not clear on your-
I think it would be because it is not for federal match. And because the stat, the, um, the law specifically says that water and wastewater projects are, um, that comply with these other, um, programs, that they are part of what is being focused on investments in water and sewer or broadband infrastructure. So-
Right. So the question, but they have to fit those other criteria of the wastewater program. So that's what the question is. So does the, does that project meet that? And that's, again, the research that we have to do to establish whether-
I bet you they already would know the answer to that because they-
We don't need resources for that right now.
Yeah, right.
Um, okay. So, uh, the next item on the agenda are appointments.
Yeah. And I think we already appointed Gary Smith. And, uh, we do have somebody from the, that's interested in being on the development review- And uh we do have somebody from the, that's interested in being on the development review board, but we're still waiting.
To get an application.
Yeah, and I should mention, just while we're on appointments, I think ERB could use another member even when this one's on.
We we're down to three members, including me, and I and and uh my term, no, and and so it would be nice if we could have a good five. It's very helpful for us to have more than three.
And I know Sarah Albert um has left town, and she was also on the Conservation Committee. And my guess is if there's somebody that thinks that this is something they'd like to do, please do send us all an email. And then also, um, as was mentioned, one of our school directors stepped stepped down because she's going to go work in, have a teaching job in in Walden. So there is a need for a school director. Now, this school director, we probably would want to have somebody to talk to, somebody who's been a school director. But that is something that the Select Board does appoint. Um, they certainly could get ahold of um Haley, what's this, Patrick Haley, who's the chair of the board, to get a little bit better idea of what that entails, or any other former board members. And I wanted to mention um that we have a new emergency management coordinator, Carla Straight, who um I appointed as emergency management director. She's the coordinator, and she comes to us with energy and about twelve years of experience in this position. So um I'm just delighted to have somebody come forward with the kind of experience she's had. She's also been in a position of evaluating um tabletop exercises and giving people feedback. So we're just really, really fortunate to have somebody say, could I, could I come play with you? And do it very productively. I think those are the only ones in terms of appointments that I remember.
Okay, good. I think that's, I can get those covered. So any other business?
I can. No, and for the agendas, um, I did add the about um the parking issue that George raised for the October nineteenth meeting.
Okay, good. So um what about that? October fifteenth is our next quarter meeting.
Right, but I think what what Tammy pointed out is that agenda seemed pretty big, so she talked about it, doing it on the nineteenth. So I I I put it down to add to the nineteenth.
Okay, good. Anything else that we need to talk about?
Other than the executive session, I don't think so.
So we have to go to executive session. So I uh want, I need a motion to go, well, we need everybody who's on this room.
Well, the, actually, the executive session, so I moved that we go into executive session to um discuss a possible litigation. And we could take a vote on that, and then everybody will, we'll need to kick everybody off.
Okay, all in favor of going into the executive session?
Hi.
Bye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Now, everybody except for the board members has has to drop off. There's one more phone that's still on.
And we.
Thirty-two people.
There it goes. There it goes. No.
There's one more person. Somebody on the telephone, if they could.
Four, six, one, seven, three, three, three. Whoever that is needs to drop off.
Um.
Or we can.
I think we can be with it.
I think because we're the host, you can drop people off. Right?
Just try that.
Pick remain.
Oh, oh, sorry. Um.
Put in waiting room.
Remove. Yes, okay.
There you go. Yep, they're gone.
Okay, so wait just a minute. So I am going to um.
Stop recording.
Lock the meeting. So there we go. And then I'm going to.
Stop recording.
I'm sorry. Uh, yes, and so that I, I just want to make sure that under security that the meeting is locked, and I would um pause the recording, if that's okay with you guys.
Yep.
In recording.
Okay, we just came out of an executive session where we discussed litigation. It was a uh a status report on where we were. We didn't make any decisions, and there's nothing to report.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye. And and thanks a lot, Tammy. Appreciate everything you're doing.
And the time is now nine, nine oh four P M.
Okay, right.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye.
Do you um lock the downstairs door when you leave?
Yes, yes, in the bathroom or at the.
Yeah, the one on the ramp. The one on the ramp. Yeah, and you can, then that way I don't have to take care of that.
Yeah, what do you want here?
Um, well, I don't have to worry about me being locked. I just know it's locked. So that's good. Thank you. No, no, I'll I'll make sure it doesn't lock. I'll probably go out the other way. Yeah, perfect. Okay.